You never know what happens. Somehow.
Hello again.
Hello again.
Hello.
Okay, so I believe the zoning board review is back in session. I apologize for whatever type of interruption that was, which is unexplainable in my opinion. But we were in the process of voting and I believe this round review. I had a good process of voting. So let me start from the beginning. The chairman and I approve the dimensional variance. This applicant has been approved for this fundamentally the same design in 2019. The difference now being that they need to extend the garage a little bit in order to make it actually a two-car garage, given the need to have a set of steps inside the garage due to the change in elevation of the property line. A garage is a common accessory use. It should be noted that the house immediately adjacent to the applicant's does have a garage, appears to be a two-car garage. The large garage is reasonable given the expected use and deny this request would be more than a mere inconvenience. So. Thank you. This is Patalakis.
I agree with Mr. Furial and for those reasons, I approve all the applications.
Mr. Wadika?
Yeah, I approve all these applications.
Ms. Horowitz?
I approve this application for reasons previously stated.
Chair also votes to approve a garage as a reasonable request accessory use. Petitioner needs storage and the petition was approved in 2019 with a 2% variance. The petitioner is only increasing the lot coverage by 2.8%, which is, in my opinion, reasonable. And to deny would amount to more than American convenience. In regards to the special use permit for substandard lot of record, the petitioner has met all of the criteria under the ordinance. I vote to approve. Your petition has been approved unanimously. I wish you luck with your project.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a petition by Maria Gandolfo, who seeks dimensional variances for a front yard setback, a special use permit to construct 12 by 13 front porch and stairs on a non-decombing lot of record located at 80 William Street. Is Maria present?
Yes, Maria Gandolfo and Mike Wilkinson for 80 William Street are here.
Okay, if you're both going to speak, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Maria Gandolfo, 80 William Street, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
And would you both raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth?
Yes, swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Tell us what you'd like to do.
We're renovating the house and I found that the existing interior stairwell lands exactly on the front yard setback line. So that the previous owners built a front porch entry to that stairwell without a permit. We're seeking to accommodate that existing front porch with the variance. And in addition, we'd like to construct a 12 by 13 deck on that front yard setback as well. We're putting a new septic system on the north side of the house. And so this deck will be on the front yard setback as well. It's a 12 by 10, 12 by 13 construction.
Okay. Board members, questions? Yes, Mr. Furial.
From Gandolfo, I'm looking at your plan, trying to visualize this. The deck is going to be on the fourth side of the home?
No, I'm sorry, the deck is on the east side of the home, the front yard setback. I was just explaining that the septic being installed is on the north side of the house. And so that obstructs us from building on that side of the house. So the deck will be on the front yard setback next to that existing front entry.
So this is the chairman, John Gordon. So if I'm correct, the east side is the water side. Is that correct?
That's correct. The front yard setback is on the east side of the house, the water side of the house.
Okay. And your lot coverage is 13%, is that correct? Your lot size is 11,300 square feet and your lot coverage existing and proposed is 13% where 20% is required. Is that correct? So you are not seeking any lot coverage variances. You're only seeking relief for a front yard setback in the east of three feet, one or two five inches. And actually, I see two. I see under the setback section, I see two front yard variance requests.
That's right. So as I mentioned, the existing front entry without permit is at just over three feet. The deck will extend beyond that to, I think it's a 19-foot setback variance.
And 19.10. So as I understand the ordinance, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, which wouldn't be the first time, that the greater setback is what takes precedent. So if you have areas that are approaching the front door entry, three feet, 1.25 inches, the setback relief that you're requesting that would carry the day would be the 10-foot, 2-inch.
That makes sense.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that makes sense.
All right, we've done it both ways.
All right. So I guess in advance of caution, we could do it both ways. In any event, other than that, you are also in an R20 zone, which means you have what is technically known as a substandard lot of record because your lot is only 11,300 feet. So I need to ask you a few questions that the ordinance requires in regards to approval for having less than 20,000 square feet. If this petition were approved, would there be adequate space for fire protection to get to the rear yard in case of an emergency?
Yes.
Okay, and is there adequate light and air between your neighbors and abutters?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, and if this were approved, would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect your neighboring property?
No.
No.
Okay, and this is kind of a tricky one, but would it create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
No.
No.
The answer is no, it would not. Would it impose, if it were approved, a substantial detriment to the public or to the immediate neighbors?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. So that said, before I ask for abutters, are there any board members that would like to ask any additional questions? Okay, abutters or interested parties?
Here an attendee and you would like to give a comment, please raise your hand.
Okay, there are no abutters that wish to speak. So the petitioner is seeking front yard variance, deck of 10 feet, 2 inches to the east. And also, front yard variance for front door entry, three feet, 1.25 inches also to the east. There's no lot coverage variance being requested. And the petitioner is also seeking special use permit for a substandard lot of record. Mr. Furial.
Chairman, I vote to approve both dimensional variances and the special use permit. The applicant is seeking your acceptance, I'm sorry, the applicant is seeking relief from an existing issue and in order to add a debt. That's allowing the enjoyment of the property by the homeowner in this area. And I would be, deny or amount to more than American convenience.
Thank you. Ms. Patalakis?
I concur with Mr. Furial and I vote to approve all three applications.
Thank you. Mr. Wadika?
I vote for to approve the three for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
I vote to approve this application for reasons previously stated.
Chair also vote to approve. This is a reasonable request and relief that's being sought is not excessive. It's a reasonable request for the residential full enjoyment of the property. The petitioner has met the special use permit criteria for substandard lot of record. I vote to approve. Your petition has been unanimously approved. We wish you luck with your project.
Thank you. And I'd just like to publicly thank Mr. Aschiola. He's great assistance and an asset to the town. Thank you.
We, the town appreciates that. Thank you very much. The next petition is by Gary Ross and Angelica Alvaras, seeking dimensional variances for rear side yard setbacks and lot coverage and a special use permit constructed 9 by 18 detached hobby studio on a non-decombing lot of record located at 15 Canton Avenue. Is Mr. Ross or Ms. Alvaras present?
Yes, I am here.
Okay. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Gary Ross. I live at 15 Canton Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
And could you raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Tell us what you'd like to do.
So, you know, now that we're in the COVID-19 environment, both my wife and I are teleworking, so working from home. I have a college student as well as a high schooler who are also primarily are studying from home. The college student is studying from home. And so, you know, it would certainly be for the health and wellness of our family, it would be nice to have like a nice hobby studio, which is going to be finished on the inside. And I've added some pictures of what the design will look like in the end. So that, you know, we can go out there and get some distance away from, you know, the other family members and kind of like relax out there or study or be on Zoom meetings like this one. CF Common Fence Point, you know, has a variety of different, you know, lots. Typically, they're 4,000 square feet, so they're small. And generally speaking, the backyards vary to a large degree. So we would still have, you know, quite a bit of space like in our backyard. But because of the septic system and the way that it was designed in 2000, it's still effective right now. And the galleys are right in the center of the backyard. So I've designed the hobby studio to be on the left-hand side. And so I'm seeking variances on the left side of the property line and on the backside of the property line. The bottom line is, you know, this is kind of like tucked away in the back left side of the yard. And Michael, if you go through the pictures, I can kind of show where it's tucked away if you go down. One more or a couple more. And then one more. So at the bottom, the bottom picture there is where I plan to place the hobby studio. And so it would be adjacent to a pre-existing fence on the left-hand side as well as a pre-existing fence towards the back. Let's see. And, you know, the bottom line is it's going to be finished on the inside. It'll have windows. It'll have a regular, you know, residential door. And so it'll be comfortable on the inside. And I think it will enhance the neighborhood as well.
Thank you. The chair has a couple of questions, John Gordon. My first question is, I'm guessing it will be equipped with electricity. Will there be any indoor plumbing?
There will be no indoor plumbing. My initial start is going to be to wire the hobby studio for electrical, to have it inspected, but not to connect anything just yet. Because the electrical will require me putting in a trench. And so, you know, it's not needed at this time. And so I do have a mini-split, as you can see from the pictures. And so my intent is to eventually have the heating and plumbing folks put in a wall mini-split there once it's all wired in. And I have like the trench dug out for electrical and I have all that inspected.
Okay, so my next question is, how high is the building?
Well, it'll probably be eight feet on the backside and probably around 10 feet on the side facing inward towards the backyard because it's going to have a sloped, as the pictures show for the design, it's going to have, you know, just a single slope towards the left-hand side design. And so the long, so the high side would be facing inward towards the backyard. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And is this going to be on a concrete slab?
It'll be on eight, it'll be on eight footings, which will have like anchor bolts. And I'll go through the design with Gareth and Matthew to make sure that that's adequate. If not, then I will put it on a cement slab, whatever they require. We didn't really talk about that when I was talking with them on the design and having them like review the plan. But Gareth and Matthew will be aware of, before I do start anything of the design, right now, I do believe eight footings will be sufficient for that with it anchored to the footing itself.
So the chair is aware that you have a very small lot, 4,000 feet. And your existing coverage right now is 30.6%. So you're proposing to add additional 162 square feet or 4%?
That's correct.
Your existing lot. So, and I get the whole thing about COVID and I understand everyone is going through a hardship. But when you define hardship in terms of the zoning ordinance, it has to go to the land. And whether or not, in terms of your property and the zoning ordinance, whether you have a hardship in terms of, let's just say you don't have any storage and you want to build a garage or you don't have a deck and you want to enjoy the outside of your property. In this particular instance, essentially, what you're asking for is another space, I guess, similar to a garage. You don't have a garage on the property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So what you're proposing is to create another space for the use of your personal residence. Board members, any questions? Mrs. Furial has no questions. Any other board members have?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Horowitz.
Are you planning to put in a kitchenette or allow for one in the future?
No, not at all. The electrical would simply be for, you know, incidentals like a computer cord to charge up the computer.
So you're not going to have any?
It's not going to be, it's not going to be a living space. It's just going to be a sitting area. And I think that the pictures that I've included depict that, you know, so it can be sort of like an outside office space.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we put a condition that it can't be a rental property.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Horowitz. When we get to the end of the petition and before we're ready to vote, I will ask if any members want to put conditions on the petition. Thank you for offering that at this time.
I have a question.
Yes.
As I'm looking at this photo here, I don't understand what, up in the top right corner, it says six by 10 porch and then eight by 10 shed. Are those, but the porch is separate from, I don't, what is that thing?
Well, it's just, it's just, it's pavers that are next to my shed.
I see. Okay.
And that's all it is. It's, yeah. And so we have a fire pit there and because the fire pit can't go on the deck, so.
Okay, because it says porch, so I thought.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I should have, I should have said patio.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, if the board is all set, we'll ask for abutters and interested parties.
There are any attendees here? So there's a Galaxy S9 Plus. If you could identify yourself with your name and your address. So whoever has their hand up with the Galaxy S9 Plus, if you could unmute yourself and identify yourself by name and address.
Okay, I think I got it now. Can you hear me? Okay, so my name is Ken Fontaine. I live at 23 Canton Avenue.
Okay.
One of the abutters?
Yes.
Okay. So I just, I just have some concerns with this.
If I could jump in here, Ken Fontaine sold his house as of October 13th, according to Maureen, his realtor's website. So he no longer owns 23 Canton Avenue.
Okay, well, that being said, he can still speak as an interested party. So you can go ahead and tell us what's on your mind.
Okay, well, there's several things. I've lived there, you know, for quite a few years, long before Gary has. And so one of the things I do is for the state is install and inspect septic systems. And over the years, where the septic system is now, there have been trees, trees that have been cut down and the roots are still there. So I think the septic system is not possibly compromised. The petitioner has also recently just received a variance for three decks on the house, a couple of the land. He also has a building permit for the for the AC unit, which goes into the setback. And also, if you look at the drawing, it looks, doesn't really look to scale to me. You've got 10 feet between the property line and the house. And you've got this little yellow building that looks like it's only about two feet wide. So the scale doesn't really look even. And so what I'd like to say is, you know, it seems to me like the septic system is likely already compromised. There's trees in the back. I don't think under DM rules, a building there would be allowed, especially that close to a septic system. Again, being that those trees haven't been removed and the roots probably are already intruding into them, there's a potential for a very big health hazard and very, very little room to get back there to reaminate or correct that problem. So again, you know, there's been four variances. He's recently got a variance, not a variance, but permits to finish the basement for extra space. So that's all been done. The building permit was issued, which allows the AC unit to already intrude with a setback on the north side of the house. So, you know, basically, I think it's illegal for one thing. And, you know, the town of Portsmouth is working with the state, you know, to come to terms with the Clean Water Act. And the town agreed to participate in that. And I think this would just actually send it backwards. And especially if you put those dimensions to scale, I think you'd see a very different picture.
Thank you.
In regard to Ken's, you know, statements, they're misleading. And so I have my septic system pumped out every two years. And I have Rego come over here and pump it out. And I continue to talk with him very closely about the layout of everything that I have in my backyard. And he said that everything is perfectly in order and working in order. There are no issues in regards to the septic. And I completely disagree with Ken Fontaine's assessment. And, and again, you know, you know, he just sold his property. He held his property for seven more years than I did, but I've been here for 20 years. And so, and Ken has left his property in disarray for all of that period of time.
I'm going to stop you there. We're not going to get into that. This is a zoning issue. The board will take all of those comments into consideration when making their decision. Mr. Fontaine, unless you have anything else to offer, I'm going to ask for other abutters or interested parties. Okay. Okay, Mr. Fontaine.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, basically finished, you know, I just covered the points of the finished basement. The system is likely illegal with the setbacks to the septic system. If there, and it does prevent, propose a serious health hazard to the neighborhood. And personally, I don't think it will enhance the neighborhood at all. And I did go to the last meeting to say that the decks, which was only like two months ago. And I did go to the last meeting to say that the decks, which was only like two months ago, I attended the meeting to advocate for the decks, because I do believe that people should enjoy their property. And I also believe there should be limits, especially in such a small area. And I'm finished with that, thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. The board will take both of your comments into consideration and apply the zoning ordinance to make a decision. Are there any other abutters or interested parties that wish to speak? Okay, so that being said, before we vote, I would like to ask any board members if they would like to put any conditions on this petition. And keep in mind that if a condition is put on the petition, the condition stands whether the petition is approved or denied. The condition will remain in place. Board members, would anyone like to propose a condition to this petition?
I would like to propose a condition that the property, that this addition cannot be used for, as a rental property, a short-term rental property.
Thank you. Is there a second? For all seconds. All who's in favor, John Horton?
Aye.
Ben Farrell?
Aye.
All right. Has been approved unanimously that should this petition be approved, that this sunroom or hobby space, should it be approved? It could never be used as a rental property?
Sounds great.
So, that being said, the petitioner is also seeking special use permit approval for a substandard lot of record. And Mr. Ross, I need to ask you a few questions.
Sure.
That pertain to a property that is substandard in regards to your residential 10,000 square feet or foot zoning district. You have a 4,000 square foot lot, which is substandard.
Okay.
If this petition were approved, would there be adequate space for fire protection to access your backyard in the event of an emergency?
Absolutely, from both sides.
And would there be adequate light and air between the buildings?
Absolutely.
And if this were approved, would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect neighboring property?
No, it won't. It'll be in keeping with the neighborhood with either natural cedar shingles that I have on my house or the gray clapboard. So it'll be all within the design.
Would it create lot coverage and/or setbacks less than the average lot coverage or setbacks of adjacent properties?
It will, but that's why I'm asking for the variance.
And would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to the immediate neighbors?
No, not at all.
Okay. So, that being said, the petitioner is seeking a 14.6% lot coverage variance, which is actually a 4% increase over his existing coverage. And a rear yard, backyard variance of 17 feet and a side yard variance of eight feet. Mr. Farrell? It's two-dimensional variances and a lot coverage variance, as well as a substandard lot of record special use permit.
Chairman, I vote to approve both dimensional variances, lot coverage variance and the special use permit variance. The concern relating to the septic system and its adequacy is something that should be assessed by the DEM and other agencies, not by the zoning. If the system breaks down, we have to assume that it's working. And if it's not working, then other agencies take care of that. This is somewhat of an unusual request, brought about by the current environment of telework and tele-education. And the applicant's request could have been resolved by seeking a reclamation to the home, which would have had a greater impact on the property than the relief being sought for this sunroom. The applicant's house is not large. Having four adults all engaged in virtual work, you know, virtual environments for work and school is challenging. And this is a reasonable request, given the family's size and their private space needs, given this environment that we find ourselves in, that isn't going to go away soon.
So you vote to approve?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Harrowitz?
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Mr. Poplakis?
The same. I vote to approve for reasons previously stated. I get it. I bought a house in Vermont for the same reason.
Guwahitan?
I vote to approve for the reasons previously stated.
The Chair is a little torn. This is a unique petition and I don't think COVID in and of itself, even though it's very much real and does present a hardship to all of America and the world, is necessarily a reason for approving or denying this petition based on land use. And I do vote to approve the petition. However, from a non-COVID perspective, in that the petitioner is seeking an additional space to fully enjoy the residential permitted use of the property. And the fact that the lot is only 4,000 square feet and the existing coverage is 30.6, the additional coverage of 4%, in my opinion, is minimal. And I think that is a reasonable request. And to deny the full use of the property would amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. And because of the setbacks, the variances that are being requested, 17 feet is excessive. However, this is, in a lot of respects, similar to a shed that would be located in the rear of the property. It's not that high, it's 12 feet. The highest portion is facing inward to the property. So I feel as though to deny would amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. Especially the special use permit criteria for substandard lot of record is not going to affect the abutting neighbors. The petitioner has not the criteria. So I vote to approve. If petition has been unanimously approved, I wish you luck in your projects.
All right, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And I'll be working closely with the building inspectors as well. So thanks very much.
Thank you. The next petition and the last petition on the agenda is by Byron and Kristen Stovall, seeking dimensional variances for rear yard setback and lot coverage in a special use permit to construct an 18, 12 by 18 addition to an existing shed located at 65 Walnut Street. Are the Stovalls present?
Well, start my, can you hear me? Nope, there we go.
Yes. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, it's Brian Stovall, 65 Walnut Street in Portsmouth.
And could you please raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Tell us what you'd like to do.
Originally, my, I have existing shed, we bought the property about three years ago. It's a 12 by 18, it existed, had some damage on the roof. And it was a little old, so we started getting into trying to fix it up. And then, as things have kind of progressed, we kind of figured I work, I work here in Portsmouth, but I work from home a lot. And I have my daughter and twin granddaughters here living with us. So I was kind of turning it into a storage space with a workspace, so I can kind of remove myself in the back of the property to do some work.
Okay, so you are requesting dimensional variances for 12-foot rear yard setback or shed extension?
Yes.
And 2% additional variance, it's actually 3% because you're proposing to be 23% in regards to lot coverage. So just so I understand, under your existing coverage, you referenced a 12 by 18 shed. So is that shed there and you're gonna knock it down and replace it?
Oh, oh no, it's existing. We're just kind of stabilizing it. It was an older shed, so we're building off it, keeping the same, basically the same look. It's a Gambrel shed, pretty much the same look. It's just extended it out to give me some room to, you know, for storage, possibly a workspace, you know, kind of like the previous guy, place to go out so I can do some work.
Okay, so just so I understand, you have a 12 by 18 shed. Does your plan to add another 18 feet to it?
Correct. It's going along the same setback that I need. It's just going out to, further out into my yard. I have a, for Island Park, I have a pretty good sized lot. So I'm just extending the distance to the variance to my neighbor in the back.
Okay. So when you're done, you're gonna have a 12 by 36 shed, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Well, no, it'll be 24 by 36.
All right, I guess I'm confused, so.
There's an existing 12 by 18, I'm adding another 12 by 18.
Okay, so in terms of, I guess I need to look at a diagram, but in terms of how you're gonna add it, is that, at the end of the day, is your shed gonna be 12 feet wide or 24 feet wide?
It'll be 24 feet, 12, but yeah, it'll be 24 feet wide, 18 feet deep.
All right, okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, I misspoke.
Okay, so at the end of the day, you're proposing to have a 24 by 18 foot shed?
Yes, it'll be a 24 by 18 foot shed, correct.
Okay, so you already have a garage on the property, is that correct?
I do.
All right. And why do you need, why do you need this to be so large?
It's actually for storage, because we had an existing 12 by 18. And I need a place to, I'm actually, we have, our house is relatively small and I have my twin six-year-olds just walked in. So I kind of need a place to be able to remove and do some.
Okay.
Still need, I want to keep, I need the storage as well.
Okay, do you have a basement?
We do.
Okay. So I'm gonna open it up to board members. Do board members have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Farrell. Mr. Stovall, is your garage currently a one-car garage?
It's a one-car garage and currently it's completely filled with stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Any other board members have any questions? Okay. So, petitioner is not seeking a special use permit for a substandard lot of record, because the petitioner has a lot size greater than 10,000 square feet in our tenant zone. So the only relief that's being requested is a rear yard setback of 12 feet and lot coverage variance of 3%. I'm gonna open it up to the abutters and interested parties. I may have a few more questions, but I'd like to hear from the abutters.
There are any abutters, please raise your hand now for a public comment.
There are no abutters? Okay. So, Mr. Stovall, I'm just curious. Merge some of, typically lots in this area are like 4,000 square feet or 5,000. Did you merge two lots to create this 10,000 square?
It's actually, it's actually, I believe it was five trailer lots, but all merged, I believe, prior to get one tax bill. So I believe they were merged at some point. So it is a really, a very large lot for down in this area.
Okay, so my next question is, I guess I'm concerned about, this is a very large shed, if you will, 24 by 18. And you're gonna be, how many feet from your abutment, the rear of the property?
It's eight feet to the fence line that's there right now.
Okay, so how many feet on the fence is there to his residence or his or her residence?
He's got another, I would assume, the setback for side yard, I've never measured it, would probably be 10, then he has a garage. And then his house is on the other side of the garage.
Okay, so my next question is, do you plan on having any electricity or heat or using this for any residential purposes?
No, there's already electricity out there. There's a 50-amp panel out there when I bought it. I'm not planning on doing anything else besides that, no water or anything. But there's power already out there, so I mean, I plan to use it as a workspace.
So you're not going to create a nuisance or a hazard in regards to noise?
Oh, oh no. No, not at all.
All right. And if you use it and you are doing construction or workshop activities, it would be during a reasonable hours and not in the heat, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Board members, any other questions? I'll ask for abutters one more time. System planner, there are no hands raised? Okay, that being said, the petitioner is seeking a dimensional variance of 12 feet in terms of a rear yard setback, as well as a three-foot lot coverage variance. Mr. Farrell? And dimensional rear yard setback of 12 feet. The 3%, 3% lot coverage variance and the dimensional rear yard setback.
I vote to approve the piece in lot coverage and the side yard dimensional variance. Applicant has a one-car garage in an area where two-car garages appear to be common. And applicant has insufficient frontage to enlarge their garage, making it into a two-car garage. But having some extra space is a simple request. Facing the, where proposed, it is actually further away from. I see the, the, where proposed, the, is actually further away from homes than it would be if the garage was enlarged or if it had to place items. So for those reasons, I vote to approve.
Harwitz?
For reasons previously stated, I approve this application.
Guajica?
I approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Ms. Paplakis?
I also approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. The chair is a little concerned that the size of this shed is 24 by 18, which is incredibly large. However, the relief that's being sought for lot coverage is only 3%, which is minimal in our ten zone. The lot is for Island Park and Convent Point is extremely large and does not require a special use permit for substandard lot of record. Mr. Farrell raises an interesting point that this use will actually be less intrusive than an expansion of a garage, and petitioner has the right to fully enjoy their property, given that he's pretty much complying with the lot coverage. And the encroachment in the rear yard is minimal, given the fact that the abutting neighbor has an additional 10 feet plus the garage for his residence. The chair has stated that he's not going to create a nuisance or a hazard by using it as a workshop with excessive noise. So I think to deny the petition of the full use of this property would amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. So I vote to approve. Your petition has been unanimously approved. I wish you luck with your project.
Right. Thank you, thank you so much.
There are motions adjourned. Chairman, Mr. Farrell makes a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good job.